We are going to, um, I, I took it, we took attendance. This is the special meeting of the Aging and Disability Commission, October 20th, 2020 at 5:30. Um, having to have to cancel our regularly scheduled meeting and schedule a special meeting since this was the only Zoom channel available. I appreciate you all being able to attend our special meeting. Um, we've done the roll call, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, if we can all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Play ball.
Play ball. Okay. Public audience or public comments? Um, I was not given any, um, comments or public audience information requests or dialogue from the town clerk. Um, the agenda and everything has been on file with the town clerk and notice out to the community, and I did not receive any, um, public comments. So we shall move on to, um, the minutes from the regular meeting on September 15th, 2020. Uh, everybody should have gotten copy of the minutes that were sent out. And, um, unless there are any changes or corrections that need to, or additions that need to be made to the minutes from last month's meeting, um, we can move to accept the minutes. Are there any changes?
I have one, one correction.
Okay.
Old Business Other at the bottom of Old Business.
Yes.
The smartphone assisted listening, the, the tension should be changed to be in the future.
Okay.
Unordered and, and will be installed soon, hopefully.
Okay, so instead of available should be will be available.
Will be available. Hopefully by the time all of them open up.
Will be.
Thanks, Mark.
Soon. Okay. Thank you for that. Any other additions or corrections?
Um, Diana, there was one small typo, and I have to flip my page to tell you what it was, but it's in, it was very insignificant. Uh, the part about the loan locker, it says Finn instead of in.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it says, um, the loan locker update hometown heroes.
Yeah, Simsbury's hometown hero in honor, it should be in honor of her work rather than. Got it. Thank you. Did you get that, Jan?
I did.
Thank you. Any other additions, corrections? Okay, um, if we can have a motion to accept the minutes from the regular business meeting on, with the, uh, correct, with the changes and corrections as noted.
Almost.
Mark moves. Uh, do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Ann will second. Um, all those in favor of accepting with corrections the minutes of September 15th, 2020, please do so by saying aye or raising your hand in affirmative.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, any, um, any opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes. We accept the minutes. Okay, Board of Selectmen Liaison Report.
Hello. Um, so this goes back a couple of meetings. Um, one of the things that we had a public audience on in past was, and it might have been, it was confusing to some people, but, um, there, there was a change to the tax credit for elderly and disabled homeowners. And, um, if you go to the Simsbury website under the Assessors Office, you can get all the details about, um, eligibility on tax credits. Um, but it was basically the only change that was to bring it in line with a state ruling that includes trust, uh, owners of property that are held in trust. Um, I don't really know the full law and who it applies to, but it has a max income limit of 55K, and all the information is out on that site. Um, I'm going to try to get that out public, either even on Facebook, um, just so people are aware of that. Um, the Spirit Council has been front and center in the last few meetings. Cheryl, um, is there, so, um, we, the Spirit Council presented a resolution that was passed declaring racism as a public health crisis. And they presented, um, you know, their mission statement and everything. And I think it was the last meeting. Um, on this past meeting, they were made an approved town committee with 18 members. Um, so they will operate just like every other committee, um, in town and have a, you know, voice at the table, and hopefully you guys have a liaison from the board. Um, and so that's happening, which is a really good thing. Um, there was an approval for the sidewalk extension. So this is kind of good if you live near there, um, from West Street. Oh, we actually, we applied for a grant to, for this, um, sidewalk extension that we're hoping we get, and it would, um, go from West Street all the way up to Plank Hill by the high, junior high school, and that opens up, um, foot traffic for people, especially if you live out in that Governor's Bridge area, things like that, um, and, and along West Street. So that, um, seems like a good thing, and we're hoping we get that grant. And we accepted, this is back another meeting, we accepted grant funds from the Greater Hereford Transit District that helped support our dial-a-ride in the amount of $6,600. And we've also renewed the town manager's contract, and that would be for four years. Um, and that goes into effect, I think, on Jan, in January of 2021. And that is my report. If anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Um, okay, moving on to the Senior Center Report.
Okay. Uh, let's see, so as I said last month, Eno Memorial Hall still remains closed to the public except by appointment. Um, we did resume our wellness clinics this month. We, uh, are now having, uh, foot care clinics in the building, hearing clinics, and we had a, uh, flu clinic today in the building. Um, and that involves one person in the room at a time, screening everybody that comes in. Um, but so far it's going well. People have been very cooperative. Um, so, uh, it's good that we have some people in the building for these clinics. Um, we continue to offer virtual programs, fitness classes, other programs, speakers, special events via Zoom, um, and they're on a regular basis. And we'll be doing that through November and December. Uh, still have no date that we know we're going to open up for, um, programs and activities in the building. Um, we're still doing our weekly grab and go meals. We used to serve lunch every week at the Senior Center, uh, but in March we transitioned to a grab and go style meal. Uh, people pick up their meals at the commuter lot behind True Value Hardware. They drive through, we give them their meal. Um, we've been averaging about 53 people a week, which I think is, is, is really good. Uh, we're planning a special Halloween event next week with our meal. That'll be the 28th, that's on that Wednesday. Um, let's see, what else? We still have, I think, as I told you last month, we still have hand-sewn face masks that our volunteers have been making. So if anybody needs masks, or you know a neighbor, friend, family member that needs a mask, please call us and we can get you as many masks as you need. Um, the only other thing, I just wanted to sort of, um, let you know, we had a group called, and some of you might be aware of this group, called the Wounded Vet Strong from Simsbury High School. They normally do, uh, fundraising and support events for veterans, but when the COVID hit, they were unable to do those events. So, uh, one of the members reached out to me and wanted to start a kindness during quarantine project. So these students have been making cards for us every single week since April. I just wanted to show you a couple because they're amazing. So every week we give these out at lunch. Um, so I just wanted to show you a couple of these beautiful cards that they've, they say two, two things like, "You bake me happy," and they made for us that says, "Have a happy day." So it's just really sweet. These kids have been doing this since the first week in April, and they haven't missed a week. So I just wanted to recognize them and thank them for all their work.
What is the organization's name, Kathy?
The name of the group is called Wounded Vet Strong. It's a Simsbury High School organization. So I just wanted to recognize them for all their hard work.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
That's awesome. Cheryl?
Um, Kathy, I, I understand Cheese Day is moving back inside in November.
Yes, uh, I don't have all the details on that. I don't know if, but, you know, I can get you the details on that because of the weather.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I just think it's important for people to know that it, that it's coming back inside.
Right.
It's been a struggle, you know, but
Yeah.
they've been doing a great job, you know, outside with the cars, but I think people are happy to get back inside.
And I can get those details from Kristen and get those to you.
So Kathy, with the lunches, um, that you're doing, I know in the past we've had commission members help with lunches. I'm assuming under these circumstances, um, there's no way for us to really help in any way. And I want to make sure, like, is there, i- you're having funding and everything is, um, okay.
Yeah, we're doing really well. Thank you. We have some volunteers that are delivering meals to our folks that are homebound and can't get out for the day. Um, right now we're in really good shape with volunteers.
Okay.
But thank you.
Yes. We want to make sure that as a commission, we, we do our part. And if there is something that the Senior Center does need help with, please, uh, let us know and outreach to us.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Kathy about Senior Center? Good stuff. Hi, Erin.
Hi, I'm sorry I'm late. I'm just getting home. I had to go into the office today, so.
That's okay. Welcome. Sorry, we know it's a different time. So I appreciate everyone really making the effort to be here. Okay, uh, we're moving on to Old Business. Um, the first on the agenda is our open commission positions. Um, I want to let everybody know that after our last meeting, I did immediately reach out to, um, Erin Butler, who is the town clerk, and had lots of correspondence with her, um, about our open positions. And I understand the process, so she has, uh, put to the Board of Selectmen the notice that we have open positions that we would like filled. It is, um, then up to the respective, uh, parties to find, uh, you know, she will coordinate how many spots are open from each party and, um, work with their nominating to, uh, outreach and, and get some more commission members to us. Um, I also wanted to let you know that in respect to both Vic and Cheryl Cook, I wrote separate letters of recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, which I hope were, were received, um, through the town clerk, recommending each of them to be moved from their alternate spot into a regular commission spot, um, leaving the alternate spots open to be filled. Um, I have not heard back, and I will follow up with the town clerk. Um, I don't know if, if Wendy has anything, um, if it was brought up. I know there's been no, there's been no notice that, um, commission members have been approved and ready to, uh, be part of our commission, but I'm, I'm hoping that the Board of Selectmen did receive the notice of the open position and my recommendations, uh, for Vic and Cheryl.
I appreciate the, I appreciate your effort, Diane.
Absolutely.
And just so you know, it hasn't come up on any past agenda. It might, maybe it's coming up on the next agenda, which is next week, but I can, um, follow up on that.
That would be great. Um, and, uh, both Vic and Cheryl, when the time comes, I know that there's a process to it, and I can go over that with you. Um, and we could take that offline, but, you know, it would require resigning from your alternate position, and then you would be nominated and accepted into your new position. But we want to make it smooth. We're not getting, you know, having anybody leave the commission. But, um, we are working on that process, um, to make sure that this happens, and we also need some additional commission members. Um, and I'm, I'm going to be transparent, and this is, um, a, a little bit awkward, but we do have a commission member, and this has also been addressed with the town clerk, and is supposed to be going to the Board of Selectmen and, and as well, because we have a, a commission member who is, uh, taking a spot currently, but is consistently absent and has not been an active member of our commission for a number of years. Um, and, uh, uh, there's been a communication, um, kind of suggesting that perhaps this commission member resigns. Um, she indicated that, no, she's going to be coming, and there was no excuse or excuse, and, and, and she's still not attending our meetings. So, um, we're finding out what the steps are to, uh, you know, to, to make our commission, uh, a, a healthy, robust commission with active commission members at all times, um, and, and being able to make sure that we have, uh, all the positions filled with those active members. So I wanted to let everybody know that that is, um, something that is being worked on and looked at to be done appropriately and respectfully and accordance to what needs to be done, um, uh, with certain specific steps. So. Yes, Mike?
Um, do we have, um, any guidelines in writing that stipulate, uh, members are expected to attend meetings?
Yes, we do. There is, uh, guidelines as part of, um, what you signed and when you took the oath that you would be, uh, in attendance to all, um, the meetings and be an active participant, and that's part of our process, uh, of trying to, um, have that position open to somebody who will be active. So we have steps, and, and part of it is, uh, showing, um, within minutes, um, uh, where, where people have attended and not attended. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, Cheryl?
Hi. Um, since I just went through this with another commission, um, most commissions have a policies and procedures, um, adopted now. Um, maybe Kathy knows if the Aging and Disability Commission has that. Um, I don't know. Um, I, I just found out that one of the commissions I was on has one, has one and some do not, but we just had to do one for Spirit Council, uh, which the Board of Selectmen, uh, reviewed for us. So in those policies and procedures, you can put a requirement of at least 50% attendance at meetings, um, before a commissioner is, is removed.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's something that we already have or something we want to think about, uh, passing, but.
Okay. Um, that's a good question.
I don't know. Kathy, do you know if we have one?
I don't know, but I can find out to tomorrow, Diana, if you want me to.
That would be great. Thank you for that, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
Because if we don't, we should have.
Yeah, you could, we could do it now, you know.
Right.
It's a.
So, um, because that's important. We want to have, we want to be an important, robust committee.
Mm-hmm.
And with active members. Um, anything else? Anybody, any other questions or comments on the open commission positions? So this is going to be ongoing and something we're going to keep reviewing until we, um, have movement and have, you know, additional, uh, people nominated for our commission. Um, age community, uh, age-friendly community update. So I did have some communication with Ed, um, and with regards to the age-friendly community. Um, last was again, the survey put out by AARP, um, which is 16 pages. Um, what we need to do now is, um, I'm, we need to look at, if we want to send out a survey and we feel it's an appropriate time to do so, we really need to shorten the survey because 16-page survey is rather lengthy. Um, I do have the contact at AARP, and, um, but Ed has the original survey and, or I could pull it up. And if we do feel that as a commission, we want to send out a survey regarding, um, the age-friendly community to, to people, um, we would need to really relook, look at shortening it. Um, and if we don't feel that this is the right time, um, because of other things that are going on, and now we're getting into the holiday season, we can table it and look at it at a later date. So, uh, I'd love to hear some input and ideas on, um, you know, and then potentially a group to help shorten the survey. So Shannon?
Um, thanks. I, I, I can't recall, you know, details about what was on the survey, but I'd be curious to know particularly during, you know, a crisis like we're facing right now, if, you know, how that poses problems to the, um, aging community and what, what issues they are being faced with. So, um, because I think, you know, I think we're going to be in this for a while. Um, so I would like to know how we can be supportive.
Okay. So then potentially, uh, maybe instead of right now the age-friendly community survey, because I don't know, there's probably nothing about COVID in that. Um, what we can do best to support our, and be an age-friendly community is to reach out and create a survey to find out how we can best serve those, uh, in the aging population during this time.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see that.
Okay. Anyone else have comments or questions about that?
Well, with the survey, uh, Greenwich and then Newtown had their own, and they redid them and so forth. I think as we, uh, looked at 16 pages, I know that theirs, from what I can recall, was not 16 pages long. How they put the survey out there, where they were actually hand, personally handing them out, which would be a little bit of a problem now. I think we need to gain some, um, information from how they did it.
Okay.
Uh, and how they revised it. Because, uh, when we've done surveys before as an aging disability commission, we have less than, uh, valid statistical data. We don't get that many people to respond. Um, certainly 16 pages would, would be a, a setback for, for most people.
Yeah.
But I, I think what you said, Diana, was maybe consider putting it off to the first of the year. Um, there are people that, um, I was meeting with when I went to Greenwich that day that I could possibly reach out to and see what their surveys look like. But that's something that will, um, take some time.
Yeah, that would be great. If you can do, if you can, uh, reach out to Greenwich and, and ask about their survey so we can compare and maybe tweak it to our needs. Um, and in the meantime, perhaps, uh, some, we can work on a survey about COVID. But again, as you pointed out, Vic, it's, uh, the delivery method and, and getting responses back. What is the best way for us to do this? You know, mailing out a survey, that requires one, you know, a whole other thing. We can't really hand out in-person surveys at this point. So then you're looking electronically and will, you know, is that going to be the best outreach, um, for the population and, and, uh, getting our information back? You know, yes, Mike?
Um.
I see Cheryl and Kate as well.
That's why, as COVID goes, we're in the middle of it now. So it's not, I don't think it's time to do a look back. Maybe right now, we can just make sure um, any real important needs you have are being met.
Great, yes, I agree.
And then later do a look back.
Okay. Cheryl?
Um, I was just going to say, I think, uh, the Senior Center is doing some surveying of their, uh, senior population by telephone. And telephone might be a better way to ask those type of questions in a more immediate, you know, response type thing. And, and that's something that, you know, volunteers could do, um, given the proper list. I think that's, um, I don't know. What do you think, Kathy? I think you guys have been doing some of that as check-in, right?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, because you know, our, our folks that aren't able to utilize Zoom or any other virtual platform, um, you know, those are the ones we really need to try and reach. So I think some sort of telephone survey is a good idea. We can get permission for, you know, make sure it's okay to call them. We can certainly get that together, yeah.
That would be great.
Kathy, in your, uh, telephoning the people, do you get people who are, uh, maybe not answering the phone because they don't recognize the number? You know, we're doing much more of this, uh, you know, caller, I, caller ID. And so if I don't know a number, and it's, and there are a lot of calls that I'm sure we all get, they say 860651, it's some marketer. Uh, are we getting, are, are you getting, uh, good response to what you've done so far?
Yeah, it, it's pretty good. You know, and the problem too is our number comes up as it's a, a general town number, comes up as 658, it's a general number. So they don't know if it's Senior Center calling, or the tax collector calling, or the first, you know, the, uh, town manager calling. But most of our folks are good about calling back.
So you wind up leaving message and they call back?
Yeah.
Okay. Kate, you had something?
Yeah, okay. My question is, why are we surveying them? Is it to find out what we can do to provide them during this time? In which case, I think maybe surveying the service providers, finding out from them who directly working with them, what they need, and then trying to fulfill that need. I don't know if we called people and said, "What do you need from the commission?" If they know what to answer as much as a service provider would be. Like your social worker, Kathy, is that the same, um, thing that Cheryl's talking about, what Senior Center's doing and the social worker?
Yes, we have an outreach coordinator that does that.
Yeah, so the outreach coordinator and then, I don't know, some other social workers around who are working with this. And then I was also thinking the state or, um, AARP who've been working and probably already doing a lot of the surveying. I mean, that information may already be easier to get at this point, and then figure out what we can do. Because probably we'll find, uh, this judging off the cuff is that a lot of it is isolating, you know? And what we can do, of course, I was thinking of Zoom, Zoom lectures and things like that, which the Senior Center is already doing, and of course, not all. And then you all, you all have the calling, right? Kathy, you have people that call as a volunteer, which is reaching out for the isolation.
Right. Well, it's a staff member that's doing it.
Yeah. So, um, that's just my thought.
Cheryl, you had something else?
Um, I was just going to say, perhaps we might want to reach out to, um, residential facilities, like the Housing Authority has both aging and disabled populations. Um, and many of them have been isolated for quite some time. Um, Virginia Connolly doesn't allow visitors. Um, Owen Murphy is independent living. Um, but the need is great. So, and there are other places around town, you know, the Village at McLean, places where, um, seniors live, um, that may be groups that we could approach, you know, if we had the right questions to ask or ask those providers, because they serve a group already.
And they may be the ones who have the most need in this time, since they are so isolated.
You know, I, I can give you some feedback, um, because I'm over, you know, involved in a grant, um, a FEMA grant specifically aimed at seniors and, um, the impact of COVID-19. And so our staff across the state have attempted to reach out to some facilities, and some facilities are just not in a position, um, of even wanting a phone call. Like they're, they're just so overwhelmed with the day-to-day that we're not getting responses, or they were like, "Not now," even though our program could be of help to them. But they are so overwhelmed, and in certain, you know, nursing homes and assisted living, so they're having a second wave. Um, so, you know, I, I just, I'm just throwing that out there, but we're not, you know what I mean, that some facilities, we're, and we're not even getting it, and we're going in and providing disaster relief. So, um, I, I just think it's so hard. Not that we shouldn't reach out, but I just, I just want to say that we might not get, um, good responses or the responses we think we would, because, um, they've been so hard-hit. But I, I, I think they're, you know, they're just overwhelmed and braced for a second wave.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, many of those people have their independent phone lines also. So you can actually call the residents without having to go through staff and, and take up their time also.
Okay, so how do we want to go about getting this accomplished? Um, do, um, do we have, I mean, we, when we're talking about residential facilities and the Housing Authority, those are, um, places that we could reach out to because we have that information. But then residents personally, you know, their, their own phone numbers, and I don't know if the Senior Center has information that, that people want to share, but how are we going to go about getting the information on who to call and, and make these calls? And what are we asking? And, you know, so, um, I want to make sure that we're doing this, um, thoughtfully and, and carefully. Um, so what would be our next step then, if we want to move forward with this kind of outreach?
Do we need to form some sort of small group? Yes.
Okay.
To try to move us forward?
I think that would be a great idea, Shannon.
Oh, I do too.
Would somebody like to make a motion to create a committee?
I would love to make that motion.
Thank you.
To create a committee to inquire about supports.
It's a subcommittee.
Yes, a subcommittee. So what, so do I need to phrase that in a certain way? Like, you know, I need to make a motion to form a subcommittee of Aging and Disability, which will look at the impact of COVID on our senior and disabled populations.
Great. Do we have a second? Kate, you have a second?
I'm sorry, I have a question. Is it look at the, the COVID on our population or how to respond? Or how to lend support?
I think how to respond is probably more accurate, yes.
Thank you for clarification.
I second the question.
About clarification. We started off talking about the age-friendly community. I would like to, to clarify, are we talking about something completely separate from looking into the age-friendly community?
Yes, this morphed into something different.
Okay, so it is completely separate and, okay.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to make clear.
Yes, it came from the discussion of the age-friendly survey. And it's kind of morphed into both age-friendly and disability-friendly community updates. They, they kind of merged into this one subcommittee survey, yes.
Okay.
Do we have a second by Kate? Any other questions or discussion?
Well, that's a good point. Should we make an emotion that we're going to delay the first survey we talked about until spring? And then go into the second motion?
Great, thank you. So do we have a motion to delay our age-friendly community update survey until the spring?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Erin's second. All those, any discussion? On that, okay, all those.
I'm sorry, there is a discussion.
Yes, thanks Kate.
In the meantime, they can still look into what was done. Vic can still look into.
Yes. Vic will be looking at, as part of this, separate from doing the survey, Vic is going to be reaching out to find out what the other communities did, how they did their survey, what their survey looked like. So he can come back and we can form our own survey. But the motion is to actually work on and present the survey in, after the first of the year in the spring. Am I correct in that? Okay. So any other discussion on that motion? All those in favor of delaying the presentation of the age-friendly survey? Please say aye or raise your hand in the affirmative. All those opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, Mark Ornstein abstains, thank you. But the motion does pass. So now we have our second motion on the table to have a subcommittee formed to do a, an outreach survey for the Aging and Disability Community to find out how we can support them and service them during COVID and what their needs are and how we can be of help. So we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any other discussion on this?
I guess I have a question.
Yes, Mike.
Can you clarify what this subcommittee would do specifically?
I think the subcommittee would, and then we would need to get a subcommittee. We need the motion to form the subcommittee, but what the subcommittee would do then is meet and decide what they want to ask the residents, whether the, the aging or disability community residents with disabilities or in the senior population. And then how is the survey going to be delivered? In what model, we decided over phone, it seems like. But is that directly to the residents themselves or to the Housing Authority and residential facilities? So the, the subcommittee would do the groundwork on getting the survey done and presenting the survey and doing the survey. Does that make sense? Okay. Any other discussion?
Who seconded the emotion, the motion? Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of creating a subcommittee for the purposes of doing the survey? Please say aye or raise your hand in the affirmative. Okay, anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so now that we have a subcommittee formed, who would like to be on the subcommittee? Shannon and Kate. Anyone else? Oh, Mike, awesome. Shannon, Kate and Mike, subcommittee. Do we have somebody that wants to head to this subcommittee to organize it?
I would if I were official member, but I'm not, so.
I know.
I can't.
I, I'm aware. I'm trying, trying.
I can do it.
Okay. Shannon will head to this subcommittee. So you can get in touch with Mike and Kate and get some good stuff going. All right. So moving on to, which we've kind of now sort of covered everything, the disability-friendly community update. Since we'll be reaching out to those within the same subcommittee, we will be covering that, that part of it. The only other thing I want to update, and we're going to be talking about this a little in our new business, but under old business, when we had talked about doing a Halloween event for our sensory-friendly Halloween event, Shannon and Kathy and I talked at, at length and really looked at multiple, multiple, multiple different ways to accomplish this. And we just couldn't figure out a way. We had the time and we, we know, we're, you know, we were happy to, to, to do something, but we, since we can't utilize Eno indoors, we tried to think of ways that we could have it outdoors, but it presented so many safety issues. And then it also became, how was it actually a meaningful event for our disability community other than, hi, just show up to get a bag of candy and thanks for coming? Which just didn't seem to sit right with any of us, you know? It's, we're not, we didn't want it to seem like we're giving you candy just because you have a disability. So in trying to find a way that it connects to the event, to the holiday and make it a meaningful event, and also knowing that, you know, it takes a long time sometimes to get out of the house, to come for something that is all of like five to 10 minutes long, is it worth it? What we are going to be doing is I'm going to be sending out an email to all of those who have come, that we have our, the contact information for, for all of our Santa and Spring and Picnic and Santa events in the past. We're going to be reaching out to them and telling them that we have not forgotten about them. And we're, we're going to be sending them the Halloween social stories that we had available last year, so at least it can help them. And we're trying to update them to make them COVID, you know, understanding what Halloween may look like in COVID this year. So we are going to be outreach to them, so they don't think we have forgotten about them. And, and if we, we will continue to think of ways that we can service this community in events, but do so in the appropriate COVID capacity. You know, I think what the Chamber did, the Fields this past weekend was really great. We don't have the resources or staff to, to pull off something to that large building, but that also presented a, it was fantastic, but how do we provide something like that when it's not that? And because that in many ways would have been sensory-friendly, because you're staying in your own car. So it was also how, you know, what do we do since that's already happening? And, and do something meaningful for those impacted? So we, we did kind of come up at a standstill to do an actual in-person event, but we will be outreach to them via email and wishing them Happy Halloween and giving them the social stories to work with. So that's where we are with that. Yes, Cheryl?
Is there any way we can deliver something? Like if we had a bag that had some sensory-friendly, maybe coloring, activity, whatever it is, and some candy, you know, something that we could deliver? If they, you know, they get the email and they're willing, you know, say, can we drop something off at your house? We will stay socially distant. Maybe we'll go in a costume, hi, you know.
That would be a, a possibility to deliver on that. Well, I mean, we could do it, Halloween's on a Saturday this year. We could do it in that afternoon for anybody that's willing. Yes, I think that, that would have to be like a sign-up kind of event.
Right, I mean, they would have to say yes ahead of time, so that we could arrange that.
Something that Shannon had also brought up and asked about. So if they, I know there may be people willing to do that, and I think that is.
You have a bit of time. I mean, that's, that's 10 days away. You'd have to get the stuff, you'd have to do the bags, you'd have to get it. I mean, I, I think it's a great idea. I just don't know at this late stage if you're going to have enough time to be able to pull it off. I, that would be.
I guess it depends how many people say, okay, you know, that's.
Right.
But then you've got to get all the stuff for the bags, you've got to pull the bags together, you've got to, I mean, it just, it doesn't give a lot of time. I, you know, I'm just.
Kathy, there, there used to be, didn't you have like a stash of things that we have used in the past?
Were those decorations that we used? Yeah, door decorations and other things. I don't, I don't think we have any treat bags left, anything like that. I mean, we certainly could, you know, with that. That's easy to purchase. Although I have to tell you, treat bags are hard to find this year, because I think everybody's buying treat bags.
Right.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, we could just use brown, brown bags.
And I can look through, let me look through our, our bins and see.
I would certainly be willing to drive around if you're so inclined.
Yeah, that would be the question. I mean, it may not be that many people to deliver to with this turnaround. You may not get that big a response. But I was actually thinking about the same sort of thing for Christmas with the seniors that are isolated.
Yeah.
So Chris, if we miss Halloween, we could certainly really plan for Christmas deliveries.
So I'm going to pin that.
Holiday deliveries.
Holiday. We're gonna, we're gonna pin that comment to talk about in new business under our sensory Santa holiday event, but yes, I, I agree with you. So, I mean, if, if we have a small group of people who are willing to make this delivery and I know Shannon's like, we talked about this.
Great minds, right Shannon?
Yes, exactly. It was mostly the candy. It was like, oh, the candy.
There must be like squishy, icky colored things we could do, you know?
Right. You know, we, what we could do is if, you know, we're going to send out the email and if we get some responses back with people saying, yes, you may deliver, there's probably just a handful of us that are needed and I'm willing to do it. And it sounds like Cheryl is and Shannon may. And we put something together quickly. I, it should, it shouldn't be hard, it shouldn't be that, I don't think we're going to get like 50 people that we need to drive around to.
Yeah, I don't think so.
You know, I delivered senior lawn signs to 356 seniors, high school seniors last spring in a weekend. So we can do a few treat bags, I think.
Yeah.
All right.
Let me know.
Yeah, so we're definitely sending out the email. And I'll get that out in the next several, you know, in the next 24 hours hopefully. And then we can, I'll get, let you know what the feedback is on accepting Halloween deliveries. All right. Awesome people. All right, next item is, which was previously mentioned briefly, but the Spirit Council, which both Cheryl and I are part of, has been very active and has been amazing. And our October presentation was on disability awareness. And we had a really, really amazing Zoom presentation. We had five panelists on our presentation. There was a woman who is in a wheelchair, was in an accident when she was younger and is a Special Olympian. We had a gentleman who is paraplegic and has done hiking and mountain climbing on crutches as he lost his legs. And then we had a young man who is on the autism spectrum. We had a young man with a developmental disability. And we had a young woman who has Down syndrome as part of our panel. And then we had Stan Sobe, who is from, wow, the name just went right out of my head as I went to go speak. Cheryl, remind me where he's from.
Oak Hill.
Thank you, Oak Hill. I'm like, all that kept coming was Chapel Haven. I'm like, that's not it. Oak Hill, who was also there giving information from an advocacy standpoint and a, you know, kind of governmental, what's, what's happening in, you know? So it was really, really, it was not only inspirational, but informative. It was well-received. We had like 40 people on the call participating and, and it really was something that I, I was proud to be a part of. And I, I did, I kind of hosted the event and I was the moderator. But I was really happy that, you know, we are reminding the Spirit Council that part of diversity and inclusion in town and in our community includes the disability community. That's an important part to remember. People remember when they talk about inclusion, but also almost remember it in a different way than inclusion when you talk about race and religion and other things. But it's part of the diversity community as well. And so we're, we're making sure that it, it is part of that holistic conversation in, in our communities. So I, I'm pleased and, and both Cheryl and I, it's great that we have crossover with the Aging and Disability Commission and the Spirit Committee. Because that's some, one of the things that the Spirit Committee is making sure that we kind of are touching on all points in other groups and town committees and commissions. So here we, we are be representing the Aging and Disability part. So.
Diana Albright joined the Spirit Committee.
Yes.
So.
That was really great.
Which is great. So now we have a great spokesman representative for the people with physical disabilities. I think it's great.
Yes. So it's, it's really exciting. And he was really, really, really motivated to be digging into the community, hands-on kind of work that Dana was ready, ready after that presentation. So it's good. And we may see him bringing stuff to the commission, you never know.
I hope so.
I hope so.
I, I thought the presentations that were given and talked about there were just wonderful.
Thank you.
Very, very informative.
Thank you. We're proud, proud to be a part of that. So thank you.
Mark.
Yeah, just a suggestion, for something like that, that seems to be so important, getting it live on some Spirit TV and getting it rebroadcast? I, I don't know what the status was of that, if it ever appeared on SCTV.
Uh, we did. There was a, there was a slight break in the recording, but SCTV is supposedly editing it back together. I don't know how that's working out, but.
It is supposed to be on SCTV. There's a delay because there was a technical glitch that happened and the library logged off, so the recording stopped and then they logged back on and the recording started again. So it was trying to be pieced together.
Hopefully editing will be able to put that back together again.
Right.
With a little bit of a gap.
Right.
Little gap.
Yeah, it'll be, okay.
But thank you. And it was nice to see, and I'm going to give a shout out, you know, we had people from other boards and, you know, Eric Wellman participated in the event. And I believe one of our police officers was also logged on. So it's really nice to see members from all aspects of the town being a part and, and coming to be part of these presentations, because it's, it's been really great. Okay. Moving on to new business. We talked about it briefly last time and I'm not even sure if there's anything new to add, but I wanted to make sure. We kept it on the agenda since we're not meeting again before election. So if anybody has any information or updates on voting accessibility? I know last time we had asked if, we know there's going to be curbside voting available for those who need it. I know in the past for seniors and those that were disabled, there was ride shares available to people who needed it to get to the polling spots. I don't know if anybody knows if that's still available this year? And maybe I was supposed to check into that and forgot. But I know, you know, we, we, the, the town is making sure everybody knows where the ballot drop-off boxes are. You know, there's been a great push by the town to make sure that voting information is out there. But we want to make sure that those with disabilities and those seniors who need to get to the polls have the ability to get to the polls and can vote appropriately and make sure they're safe at the polls. Yes, Mike?
Um, I'd just like to report on how good their experience was in sensory for voting by mail. Every registered voter in town receives a mailing where you can request a mail-in ballot. So on, on Thursday, I mailed my back. Then two days later, Saturday, my ballot was in the mail. And there's a drop off box right down hall. So it was real simple and straightforward to vote.
That's great. That's great. And I know that you can track your ballots, some, your information and you can track your ballots.
Yeah, there's a, there's a link on the state. Um, I think it's the, the Gina Merrill's Secretary of State site, and you can put your name in. Um, I was just curious as how, you know, the information, like the registrars are pushing out a lot of information. Probably the town committees are pushing out a lot of information. And there's like posts with all the steps and your alternatives and, you know, things like that. How does that get out to all the seniors? Like, is there a direct message? I was just curious.
We did an email blast with that information from the town clerk, and I will tell you, we are overwhelmed with phone calls, people asking questions. And we have great answers from the town clerk's office.
Okay, great.
Yeah, a lot of phone calls about it.
Yeah.
You know, and I think Shannon posted something, I think it was just even yesterday, talking about the disparity in voters for people with disabilities and that there's a lower percentage, and there's a very low percentage of people with disabilities who actually go out and vote. And, you know, so I know I want to make sure going forward, you know, that people of all abilities and ages know that the availability to vote, to vote and their right to vote and have, make sure that they have accessibility to voting. So, um, I know that the ride services that have happened in the past, I, I actually don't know. My question is, who had been coordinating those? Were those parties? Go ahead, Shannon.
Yeah, those were done by the parties.
Got it. Um, do you know if any party is doing? Because it's hard right now. Nobody probably wants to get in a car with a stranger this year to drive to the polls. But we want to make sure, I know that some of the, like the Housing Authority in the past and some of the residential facilities had done uh, rides to the polls. And I'm hoping that that's happening again this year to make sure that people can get to the polls who need to get to the polls. And maybe they've sent in ballots already. So, yeah, Cheryl, did you have something?
Um, uh, some of those facilities have, the registrars or the assistant registrars actually go there. So there's a Republican and a Democratic registrar there, and they, they administer voting in person while they're.
Perfect.
So they, they have an arrangement to, to help people with their, you know, absentee ballots and things like that. So.
Awesome. Good information. Thank you.
I'm gonna need to bug out, so I want to say goodbye. One, one comment just came up. When, when you, you were talking about the person that has not attended meetings. I, I got onto the website just to see what are, who are members? And the, the information is a right-hand column, news and announcements, agendas, minutes, really needs to be updated. I don't know how it gets updated, but there are no minutes for, for twenty twenty out on the site.
Yeah, and I have submitted them all to the town clerk. So I'm not sure why. I know Ed had said the agenda wasn't posted last time, but it should have been because we submitted them. So I will look into that. Thank you.
Usually staff follows up on that, right, Kathy? Is that a?
Yeah, I'll, I'll check on that. I, I could've sworn I saw that on the website, but I'll check on that.
Maybe it's in another location now. I don't know.
Okay.
Bye, goodbye, everybody.
Kristen does it a lot for me.
Thanks, Mark. All right, so that would be awesome. Kathy will follow up on that. Um, the sensory Santa event. So let's talk about what, what the December is going to look like for seniors and for people with disabilities and what we could do for them. So after having an in-person event kind of posed too many issues for Halloween, we then decided to focus on the sensory Santa event that we've done in the past. We thought we may have had a, an answer and solution, although I have to reach out to our Santa to see if he's even willing to do anything kind of social distance. And Shannon had reached out to Flammick Farm, since they have a Santa event every year and it's out in the pavilion. And so that may work. And originally they had said yes, you know, and we can have our own days. I guess, Shannon, do you want to give the update that you got today?
Um, yeah, sure. I, I spoke with Julie today, and she just said that they have decided to close the farm down in December. And there Santa had expressed concerns with, you know, exposure as well. So they just sort of decided to cut their losses and close everything down. So she did say that if we wanted to do something in November, if our Santa is willing to participate, or if we find some other way to do it, she would be willing to host us outside.
So, um, November, honestly, some, I mean, I, you know, I look at it like it's better than nothing, but it kind of feels a little too distant from uh, anything. But, you know, if it's done like that last weekend in November, which normally would be Simsbury Celebrates, but who knows? We, we do want to encourage people to participate in your virtual Simsbury Celebrates and, and whatnot. So I don't want to overstep anybody, any, any other events that people may be looking at. So, you know, what, what are people's thoughts? You know, I can, we can look into, it's gonna be, it's gonna be cold. So to the outside, we understand it's gonna be cold. But, you know, we could, if we have a Santa that wants to help and maybe do something at the Van Shell, if it's, if we can have availability even on a weeknight or a weekend day and do sign in time slots and they show up and Cheryl, is it, is, is any, do you know of anything that, you know, because I know we, you, there's usually a Santa event at the Simsbury Celebrates and that's different this year.
It is. Um, I do not have all the Simsbury Celebrates details yet because they are still working on a lot of that. I have talked to a couple of the committee members, but they're not committing to a definite right now. So.
So, you know, it is something that.
I, oh, I, so I, I just want to be, um, and I don't, because I, I had somewhat of a negative comment before, but I just think it is so risky. I, I, I just. And so for a town committee, to, even if it's one person at a time, that Santa we're exposing and, and the people there, I, I feel terrible. Um, but I say that as I mourn my own loss of holidays with family. I, I just don't know how we could put our, our stamp on doing something where people are, I, you know, I, I, and I, like, I like the idea of, is there some way to do something else where we're dropping something off, where you could drop it off and leave, you know what I mean? So I, I think if we could think of something more like that, or could a Santa go and make house calls and be out on the, you know, where you wouldn't even have to go near somebody, something like that? I, I just, I don't know. I, I.
No, and, and I appreciate that. And that's why we are not doing anything in a bubble. We have this discussion as a commission because you're right. Um, and actually, one of the things that I thought of as you were speaking is, which didn't necessarily work for a Halloween event, but could work for a sensory-friendly, for the disability community, uh, Santa event is you could do a virtual Santa event, potentially. It didn't necessarily work for Halloween, but we could have where they get on a Zoom with, digitally with Santa, and they get to meet Santa that way. And, and, and it came to me because one of the things that I did for years for my own son, and there was a reason for it, because somebody told him that he was on the naughty list and he may not get presents, and that was a massive freakout and meltdown and, and hysteria. So for years, I, I wound, I found this Santa PNC, whatever, and you put in all the information. And so I would literally have a video made and Santa would talk to Carter. And at the end of the video, he'd make the, the nice list every year. But it made me think, like, that made such a big difference for him watching Santa talk to him. And, you know, if we could do a, a Zoom Santa, a virtual Santa event, and we have people sign up for Zoom time slots. I know people are getting tired of Zoom, and I know even for the disability community, sometimes it's hard to do Zoom. But at least it's an alternative and something that is actually meaningful and special, and they can meet Santa and you can get a screenshot with Santa. And, you know, it's, it's something that we're not just letting go to the wayside then. It can be done safely. So that's a possibility that we would then, Kathy, we would probably need to get a, a Zoom time slot from the town, but we could do it at a time, it doesn't have to be seven o'clock on a weeknight that everybody, you know, you have all these other town committees. You know, if we could do even an afternoon Zoom, you know, a weekend afternoon Zoom for an event, it could be quite meaningful. You know, I don't know what people think about that. I know, again, virtual is getting tired, but yes, Kate?
I think it's the best solution because we don't actually know what's gonna happen in December. If it's the way they say, we may have a surge, it just may, we could make a lot of plans and it could all be shut down. Just Santa in front of a tree and then maybe have a Christmas carol, somebody singing or some Christmas music. I think it'd be festive. And you all know better about low sensory, but if, you know, screenshots. If it was one event with everybody like we are in all the squares and had a screenshot that they could get so that they would feel like there were other people there and it wasn't so isolated, but that's that whole low sensory thing. I don't know how that would go over. But I think it's the best solution, really. And again, I thought about delivery, but somebody has to drive Santa around probably, and then
Right.
Does Santa feel comfortable? It's a lot to ask of Santa.
Yeah. Well, and, and again, I think for that type of event, a Zoom event plays better. Like, we couldn't figure out how to do a virtual Halloween, anything, you know, for the population. Um, so this may be the way to go and, and keeping everybody safe. But I think it could still be meaningful and something special and, you know, and, and something in this particular year, make it really seem special for them, you know?
Have, have, on the flip side, is the Senior Center planning any kind of food drop off for seniors?
For, for the holidays?
Yeah, for Thanksgiving.
We are working on a couple of things for the Thanksgiving week and all the holiday period, too.
Oh, so they'll, okay. So do you need our help as a committee to help with any of that?
Um, right now, we're okay. We have a couple of community organizations that have offered their help, but I just didn't let you know.
Okay. So they'll be covered in some way with food drop off or whatever.
Right, right.
Or whatever, okay.
And Diana, we do have two Zoom accounts in our department, so we could definitely make that work for a virtual Santa event.
Okay, Kate?
The other thing, I had the idea when Kathy was showing those little cards. They're so cute. It'd be cool if we could get some, some group to make Christmas cards and we could deliver them or send them so that they would get a Christmas card.
We had some volunteers at St. Mary's School who would be interested in doing that. So we can definitely do that.
So do we want to make these cards for the, the, those who have come to our disability events in the past or to seniors or to both or?
I don't know how many seniors, but it'd be great, especially the ones that are isolated. Um, Kathy, do you have a, I mean, are we talking hundreds or, you know, I mean, would it be feasible to do?
You know, again, we have a lot of organizations that have offered to do that for our senior population, so I think we're good there. And thank you to all of them. So I think we're, we're set there.
And then St. Mary's can be our go-to for the disability population who have attended our events and who have been part of that in the past.
Can I, can I just put in a plug? When we talk about disabilities, can we also include the mental health population?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if. You know, I just wanted to add that in.
Yeah, I think that's, I, I haven't necessarily talked about it in, in a separate thing because it's, it's all, in, in my presentation, it's, it's, they're part of the community. But thank you. For those that maybe not aware that that is part of our mission holistically. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Yes, Cheryl?
Um, I'm just gonna put in a plug for the Housing Authority because I know there are people at Virginia Connolly who didn't, literally did not leave their room for five or six months. And I think it's a population that often gets forgotten. And I know sometimes the Senior Center gets involved up there, but they're fairly, they're very isolated now. So, I don't know. Kathy, are you including them in your card distribution?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we can, we can do that. I, I guess I assume the staff there was, but we can certainly, I can call over there, yeah.
There's literally three staff members there now. So it's, it would be very difficult. And for those at Owen Murphy, you know, there's no staff, and those are people who are either under sixty-two and totally disabled or over sixty-two and able to live independently. So I think it's a population we could offer some, some holiday cheer to.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
When you say three people serving, how many residents?
Um, well, there's forty at Virginia Connolly and seventy at Owen Murphy, something like that, so. There's a director, an assistant director, and a, a social director and social relations. And there is a, I did not count the maintenance staff. There's one person who is maintenance. So there's not a lot of room in there for.
Right. So, so Kathy's gonna include those with the Senior Center things. But I know Kate, before you had brought up maybe delivering things to seniors, especially under isolation. So if we're doing this card thing, is that gonna, is that something that you thought would cover it? Are you thinking something else? Because if we're gonna plan, going back to the sensory, Santa will do a virtual Santa event for the disability community, for those that could then use, you know, would normally be attending our sensory-friendly event. And we, but we'll put it out to the community for new people as well to, to be a part of it and to sign up. But we want to make sure that you brought up before the senior population and those that may be isolated right now and, and bringing something to them for holiday cheer. I know we'll have some cards going out, but is there something else that you had in mind?
Oh, it's Sandy.
Hi, Sandy. Well, if we could, I, you know, candy, that'd be too hard with the seniors if they have special dietary problems. If we had the money, maybe a little plant or something. And maybe we could hand-deliver the, those cards to them with the little plant or something. And maybe figure out who is isolated, who's, who doesn't have family and stays there instead of all eighty. I don't know. I mean, it's so hard to know what's gonna happen in December. Are we allowed to be in the lobby and drop something off in the lobby and they can come down and get it? I, I don't know. Cheryl, do you have an idea? Cheryl, do you have an idea?
Um, well, Sandy is actually the chair of the, the board at the Housing Authority. Sandy, I was just talking about the Housing Authority. And perhaps that the commission could help do some distribution of holiday cards or something for the residents there, being that they are both aged, aging and disabled.
Some kind of a small gift, maybe.
Hmm. So at Virginia Connolly, nobody's allowed past the front door. Um, so many of them, they just reopened the dining room, um, just last week. So literally they had not left their rooms even for meals, um, they had been delivered. So now, uh, many of them are coming down to the dining room again. Um, Owen Murphy is, is pretty much, you know, on their own as far as that's concerned. Most of them receive food assistance, um, through Cheese Day and other food programs. So, you know, there's, there's that.
Think we could come up with some ideas for a small gift for those folks. I think that's a possibility, Cheryl, we could come up with.
Um, we were just talking about, um, cards and organizations that might be willing to make some cards. And I was asking the group to include the Housing Authority in that.
You know, the Scouts too, especially the Girl Scouts, the Brownies, yes. They love projects.
Yes.
They do.
Well, it'd be very cool if they could make a little ornament or something that could just be hung or.
Marshmallows, they love to work with marshmallows. They eat, they eat two and four.
One.
But they could make like little snowmen or something like that.
Just, um, they're not getting together a lot. So I, I mean, to get them together, to all do a project, they're, they're just not meeting in a group because.
Well, they do it, my, my daughter is a, a, a Brownie and a Daisy leader and they do it through Zoom, Zoom. And they have little packages that the parents pick up and then they make them at home.
Yeah.
Well, that's a possibility for them Scouts to do that. And they get a service badge for that.
That's a good idea.
So I'd say maybe shoot for delivering something, what, a week before Christmas or the holiday season? Um, so it's a little festive going into the holiday.
Think that'd be a nice idea.
So like by the eighteenth, like the week December fourteenth through the eighteenth.
I don't have a calendar in front of me, but let's see. I think we just need to remember that not everybody celebrates Christmas and we, for the other holidays in December and maybe be mindful of whatever, I'm, I'm looking at when Hanukkah is and.
Um, the Hanukkah begins on the tenth and ends on the eighteenth. So delivering the week of the fourteenth to the eighteenth is actually appropriate for Hanukkah and Christmas. Um, Kwanzaa begins on the twenty-sixth, so that could still be appropriate. Um, and I don't know when Diwali is, um, but I can look that up.
Well, snowmen are kind of ecumenical.
Snowmen, snowflakes.
Right, those kind of things.
Little people.
So I guess we'd need to know what kind of budget and who's going to coordinate with the group and our target group.
What, what kind of numbers are we looking at in our target group that we, you know, like we want, say, we say we want to reach out to the Scouts and say, can you make this many for us? Like, what is our number?
It appears to me that we're just, uh, focusing on, uh, Virginia Connolly and that group and the rest of the citizens in town, we're not really addressing. Is that correct?
Um, the senior center, I think, is addressing those.
Right.
We are, but I'll tell you, you know, we are certainly not reaching every senior in, in Simsbury.
I don't know how you could.
I'm not sure that's possible.
Right, so I mean.
So we were gonna do Christmas cards for the disability group. And then were we gonna target specifically people we know that are isolated? That we find out from the Virginia Connolly staff? Or do everyone at Virginia Connolly? That sort of thing. I think we need to decide.
Um, Sandy and I can probably take care of that.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll handle those.
Take care of the Housing Authority, so. We'll, uh.
So then, um, will one of you reach out to the Scouts maybe and see if they can do the project for your population there? Is that okay?
Sandy, the young man who's working on the Eagle Scout project at BCR is, maybe we could ask him if he has other youngsters available.
I don't know anything about the Scouts up here. I'm just talking from the southern part of the state.
I'll find out. I can find them out.
We could certainly call the Scout leaders.
Yeah.
And then Saint Mary's will do the, um, for the disability group, the Christmas cards.
So do we want, um, cards and candy or do we just want cards?
They could be, I know, they could be holiday cards or winter cards. Um, uh, they could do candy. Try to be allergy, you know, sensitive candy.
Candy canes.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion, anything else to talk about with these things? Kind of covered them? We feel good about it? Yes, Kate?
Yes.
Uh, did we make decisions about, um, Zoom? Are we just gonna work toward that and?
Oh, the Zoom Santa event?
Yeah.
Um, I'm, um, I'm gonna work with Kathy, um, and I can, we can put something out. I think we decided we will go forward with a Zoom event, a virtual Santa event for the, uh, we could put it out for the, you know, we'll, we'll announce it, but I'll also specifically reach out to those who have attended our events in the past. Um, so that they can sign up for Zoom time slots with Santa. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, all right, we'll move on to our spring senior presentation. Vic?
I had to get myself off of mute. Um, I had been in correspondence with, um, the AARP on the Road to Liveability presentation. And one of the things that we did as a, as a commission was that we wanted to put it off because of COVID and we didn't know where it was going. So just recently I reached out again saying, is it possible that they could present it virtually? Uh, at some point. And, uh, I did get a response back. I did include, uh, Diana in, in the correspondence that I got. So what the community outreach director was saying, there are things that she'd like to know and she, they certainly would be willing to do a Road to, uh, Liveability program in the spring. Three things that she wanted to know is whether we would set up the Zoom or they need to. Registration for your, your group, internal only, or do you invite outside guests, which we, we would be doing itself. We're letting it go out into the community. Third thing is how long of a presentation would you like? With the things that we've discussed this evening, uh, my recommendation is that we do this probably sometime in April. And, uh, present, and I don't know which Zoom platform we would use, but it would give us time to go out to the community and highlight bullet point the program and, uh, market it to the community in general. And, uh, Erica, uh, Jan, for your information, the person that I'm working with is Erica. I'm gonna spell her last name because I probably can't say it correctly. M I C H A L O W S K, Makalowski.
Okay, thanks.
She's the one that, um, you had mentioned, uh, Anna Naroski, but she passed it on to Erica. So Erica will be our contact, um, for that. And they have already the programs uh, prepared. So it's not something they will prepare specifically for us, but it'll be prepared as AARP presents it. And since we postponed the, if you will, the questionnaire that, at this point in time, I think this would come, uh, should come a little bit after that, but not necessarily. I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but, um, it's again, it's education. It's something that the community can, can think about and look into. So, um, if there's any, uh, questions about when we should do it or when you'd like to do it, uh, we could discuss that now.
Thanks Vic, that's good, some good, good work on.
Thank you. Now, let, let clarify, I, with the Zoom thing, I know the library has Zoom capability, the tunnel has Zoom capability. Where does this go? I mean, from my, I need to be educated on that. Uh, is it, do I sign up with the town when we come up with this?
Vic, we can use our account from our department.
Okay.
We can set that up for you if you'd like.
All right. Do we have any ideas to the month? Kate, you were.
Well, I want to, uh, before we get to Kate's question, um, Susan, did you want to speak, chime in about the library at all?
No, we do have two Zoom accounts also. So we are, you know, sponsoring community groups with the other one, so.
And then the library could publicize it as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, because if it went through the library, you'd get a wider, uh, audience or the library audience, which is the audience we want to capture, isn't it? Mostly the library and senior center.
Yep. And, and I agree with that. I mean, we were looking, uh, just as your program, you mentioned the other day, uh, today, Diana, about the, uh, forty people, you know, participating in your panel discussion. I mean, we're looking to spread this as much as we can. Since, um, and I, I can ask this question now, with Zoom, is there any limit of the number of participants?
Um, the library account, we've been able to have a large number of participants. I think you have a pretty large account.
Yeah, ours is about a hundred or more.
Yeah, ours is three hundred, so.
Yeah, we might have one of those, but if.
Is anybody gonna say four hundred? Is four hundred going once, twice?
A hundred's easy to, you know, difficult to manage as it is.
Yeah.
Anything else? Then let, let's, can we sort of decide, so I'll go back to, um, Erica and say, yes, we're interested in doing it. Uh, and we have the capability to do it via Zoom and then find out from her. Um, I don't, she asked the question, how long do you think it's, it's, it should be? As far as I'm concerned, it shouldn't be any more than an hour at most. And will, will there be an opportunity for Q and A?
I would make it an hour and a half so that you have that Q and A time because of presentations we've made have been scheduled for an hour and a half, but have often gone two hours. Um, I don't think, I think your presentation, keep it at an hour and a half. Um, leaving that time for Q and A. And I will tell you that, uh, my experience is people have participated in Q and A and interactive discussions over these Zoom presentations we've done.
Yeah, another thing I just want to bring up is we're now looking into not only just Zooming at the same time, but live streaming at the same time. So you might be able to get a bigger audience.
Great.
Is that, uh, Sue, is that, um, something different than live streaming than, than Zoom?
We would be doing both at the same time. So we'd be doing like Facebook Live and the Zoom at the same time. So we're looking at those possibilities to try and reach bigger audiences.
Um, I just want to do a quick time check. It's six fifty-eight. Rachel, are we being kicked off at seven o'clock? So.
Um, yeah, yes, my understanding is that seven you're kicked off.
So, um, we have about a minute more to talk about this and then we're going to need to adjourn unless there's something else, so.
Does anybody have an objection with me going back to them for April, a presentation in April?
I think that's it.
I'm, I'm, I'll move forward with that.
Perfect.
And, and be discussion with, uh, Kathy and Susan about, uh, what vehicle we're, we're gonna use.
Great. Thank you, Vic. Um, anybody else have anything under other for like thirty seconds? Okay, um, well, thank you, everybody, for this great meeting. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Oh, before we adjourn, next meeting will be November seventeenth, hopefully at our regularly scheduled time at seven PM. Um, so it's the third Tuesday of the month. So do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
They're moved.
Vic, any, a second? Okay. All in favor of adjourned the meeting? I, motion passes. Thank you all for joining us. Thank you for being part of this special meeting. Great job, everybody.